I am.
Okay, start in just a minute.
Yeah, could you email me the slides for the work session as well?
Um, I'll try. I think they're kind of big, so.
Okay.
To Josh, you have it available right now. Oh, it's getting canceled.
Eighteen, and turn this over to the manager.
All right, good morning, Mayor and council members, members of the public. So we are in the middle of a series of discussions with our departments to explain the different service levels that we provide to our residents. So next up is Development Services, and you'll recall with the reorganization from three, four years ago, that that will include several different divisions, and I'll let Cody take it over from there.
All right, Mayor Bozen, members of council, good morning. My name is Cody Christensen. I'm the Director of Development Services, and I'm excited to be here this morning to give you all an update on what we've been up to in the Development Services Department. I won't be doing this alone. I also have a couple of my division heads, Jason Van Essen and Kerry Cruz, as well as Mike Ludwig, my Deputy Director, who will also be providing some of the insight here this morning. I'll be filling in for Brian Bishop, so we don't have all three divisions of Development Services represented, but hopefully we can cover the details sufficiently. So what we'll be covering today, we'll be going over the core functions of the department and of each division within the department. We'll be providing some statistics that show both the volume of what we've done in fiscal year 25, as well as some performance measures of how well we've done it. We had a pretty good year last year, so we'll be talking about a number of accomplishments. We've got to beat the drum with those, about those for the city of Des Moines, and we'll also be giving you a heads up on some upcoming initiatives, what to expect in the coming year. So core functions of the department, really when you boil it down, the ultimate thing that we do is we play a central role in shaping how the city grows and continues to develop. A city is like an ever-changing ecosystem. So what Development Services does is we act as both a dispatch to get members of the community connected with services and city staff, and also as a conduit of communication. So the things that we produce, you see a number of plans listed up here. Those aren't Development Services plans, but the Development Services Department plays a huge role in communicating with the community and connecting the stakeholders of our community with city leaders to reflect what is important to Des Moines in these plans. If you look at the photos up there, we have a couple of views, both of downtown, one looking to the east, one looking to the west. The market district there on the bottom shows something that's teed up and ready for development. We put a lot of effort into establishing plans and working with developers, scraped a bunch of sites, and now we have a number of full city blocks that are shovel-ready and ripe for development. Look at the other view, and that's a view looking to the east from the Western Gateway. It shows the fruits of our efforts, the fruits of the city's efforts, the number of projects that have been built, the way the city has changed. I didn't include an older picture from the 1950s, but when you look at that, Des Moines has changed substantially over the past few decades. So how do we do this stuff? Well, Development Services is broken into three different divisions. You have our Planning and Urban Design Division, and this team really focuses on establishing plans and strategies that set the tone for where Des Moines heads. It's like building the playbook for development in Des Moines. I talked about the ever-changing scenarios. This group is really focused on identifying the challenges and taking steps to be prepared, put things in place that will help us avoid avoid negative outcomes. It sets the trajectory for where we go in Des Moines. Second division is our Office of Economic Development with a similar focus. This team administers incentive programs to push for a little bit more development or to foster more business growth and retention. All of these are strategic actions that are taken to really focus on what Des Moines needs and provide a little boost where it's needed in certain occasions. The third division is our Permit Development Center, and these are the technicians that assure that what is developed in Des Moines is built of high quality, meets standards, and that what goes in is sustainable. All in all, the department is made up of a team of 46 people with 422 years of experience with the city of Des Moines. When I tally up these numbers, I am really impressed that we have that much institutional knowledge in the Development Services Department. So it's really no surprise that we do have so many things to celebrate. Now, I'm going to let my team talk more in depth about the specific accomplishments from the past fiscal year, but there's a few highlights that I want to mention. I talk about some of our plans, and you'll see up at the top I have the City of Des Moines Housing Strategy. This is probably one of the most recent planning initiatives that we've gone through to establish a strategy for where Des Moines heads in the future. Now, we've only taken the first few steps with that. We have a lot of work yet to do, but this is a good example of some of the efforts that this city makes that builds a lot of confidence in the community of investors out there. As people are looking to invest in their next real estate venture or business opportunity, when they see the city of Des Moines doing what it does, it builds a lot of confidence, and people see Des Moines as a good place to spend their money. This is reflected in some of the projects that we've permitted here in the past year. The picture on the right-hand side of the screen is the new 33-story tower going in at 515 Walnut. Tallest building permitted since 801 Grand, and the tallest ever residential structure built in Des Moines. This is reflective of the successful year that we've had in fiscal year 25. Excuse me. The bottom left of the screen reflects our first-ever certified site designation that the city has received. This came from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. It was a culmination of effort between the city, landowners, and developers. What this has done is this puts us on a map, and it's attracted attention already from industrial users across the nation that are looking for their next potential site to expand into. These are just a few of the things that we've seen. But the big headline is just the amount of both public and private investment that's been committed to Des Moines over the past year. Our building permit numbers, for the first time ever, topped $1 billion worth of value. That's pretty substantial, and when I look at those numbers, I look at all the work that we've done, all the things that all of you have committed to, and that's what builds the confidence in the investors out there that are looking for a place to develop or to relocate their businesses. Like I said, I'll let my team talk more about more of the details on accomplishments, and I'll be filling in for Brian Bishop here to dive into more of those details. So the first division that we're going to cover is our Permit Development Center. This division, like I said, is made up of the technicians. These are the people that are really focused on making sure that what's built in Des Moines is up to code, meets city standards, and is built in a way that's going to be sustainable and high-quality. On the slide, you'll see a number of pictures. This reflects a bunch of what this team does. The Permit Development Center is really broken into three specific areas. We have a team of administrative staff that answer hundreds of phone calls, respond to thousands of emails. They take a lot of questions. I mentioned how we're like the dispatchers. We may get calls about, okay, there's a dog running loose through the neighborhood. Who do I get in touch with? What about this rental property around the corner? I'm looking to build a deck or a garage. Our team gets a lot of those calls and redirects them if we're not the people that handle it. They redirect them to connect with those that are. I've received a number of calls from many of you on projects, and I think you've often heard me say, well, that's really not my wheelhouse, but we do play a role in it, and a lot of times we're just the people that are facilitating the conversation to make sure that we connect the community members with the right city staff that are there to help answer their questions. Absolutely. Well, we all enjoy doing that, and we will continue. So that's our admin team and the PDC. They also issued the permits, the thousands of permits. There's a lot of volume that goes through that group, but that's just the front line. Once you step back into the office, then we also have a team of plan reviewers, and they're looking at all of the plans that come through, residential, commercial. Anything that's built coming up out of the ground, this team is reviewing, and they work pretty closely with the other two divisions through that process. Once the permits are issued, then they hand things off to a team of inspectors, and that's our group that's out in the field, working with the contractors. Many times, they're looking at identifying issues before the issues arrive, so they can avoid those and find solutions early on in the process. And then they're looking at making sure that what is built is built up to code. Some of the unknown, some of the things that aren't really widely known is that this team also does a lot of disaster response. So every time that a flood rolls through, this team is out in the field doing flood damage assessments. They're collecting a bunch of data that goes to FEMA in the event that there's enough damage to secure FEMA funding to help with the recovery efforts. And if any of you are unlucky enough to ever have a car crash into your house in the middle of the night, you'll probably meet one of our inspectors out there. These guys are the ones that come out and do a quick damage assessment, determine if there's substantial structural issues that happen from the vehicle impact. You just see one of those pictures up there, but we have a whole other slide presentation just focused on the vehicle building impacts. It's unreal how many of those that we have. So that's the general overview of the Permit Development Center, but I do want to get into some of the statistics, both the volumes and the performance of what we do. Like I said, this team issues a lot of permits. They also conduct a whole bunch of inspections. Nearly 24,000 inspections were conducted in fiscal year 25, and one of the things that we focus on in Development Services is we all, many of us come out of the construction trades, and we recognize that time is money when it comes to development and construction. So when you look at the turnaround time on these inspections, 88% of those 24,000 were done within one day of the request when it came in, when the request was, when the inspection was requested. If you back that out to two days, which is more of the goal of the metro-wide area, that number grows even higher.
They build for the Ronald McDonald House, and you had staff out there at 2:00 in the morning and inspect.
Yep, absolutely. The team looks forward to that sort of stuff. We enjoy the unique projects. Those 24-hour builds are kind of fun. I wouldn't want to do them every week, but on the instances when they do come up, we certainly have fun and enjoy working with those project teams. Last year, we issued nearly 11,000 permits. Of those, about 8,500 were trades permits, so mechanical, electrical, and plumbing trades. And of those, 91% of those 8,500 were issued within one day of receiving that permit application. Now, part of that is for, to just provide good customer service, to make sure that we're turning things around quickly, make sure that we get those projects moving. But there's another piece to it, too. If we take too long to issue a permit for, say, a water heater that went out in the middle of the night, that contractor, if it's going to take too long to get the permit, they're going to replace that water heater the next day. And if we make it convenient to obtain those permits, we get more of those permits issued. There's more of a chance that permit just won't be obtained if it takes too long. And the benefit that comes from that is then we have an inspection scheduled, and our team of inspectors goes out and makes sure that what's done is done right and it's safe for the inhabitants of that home. Working our way down the slide, we've kind of covered the permitting and inspection side. The reviews are one thing, one element of this operation that takes a lot of time. And when you pull the number of submittals, 4,642, that's the number of times that plans were submitted. So with each project, they submit a set of plans. Oftentimes, it needs to go through a couple of rounds of review, and that's what this reflects. So with each one of those submittals, there's a number of reviews that are done. The 4,889 reviews that you see on this slide are just the Permit and Development Center staff. For many of these, there's reviews that are also done by Public Works, Engineering, or other divisions within the Permit Development Center. So you total up all of those, and it's in the 10,000 to 15,000 range of the number of reviews that are done each year. And we will get into more of the performance on how all those are done here in upcoming slides. Yeah, the next slide. Here we go. So, like I said, we do a wide range of projects, and it can be a little challenging to try and gauge performance just based on a wide average, because not every project is the same. A new deck or a storage shed is a lot easier to issue the permit for than a new house or a new high-rise building or renovation of one of the hospitals. So we do break it into some categories. A couple that I'm showing here on this slide are a couple of different permits. The permits for new homes. Last year, we issued 198 permits for new homes, and then we want to break it down to how well are we doing that job? How much time do those permits, do those plans spend in our hands? So those 198 new home permits that were issued, on average, they spent 11 days on our desks being under the review process. We can also pull numbers that show how long it takes to issue the permits, but there can be a lot of time that's spent waiting for financing or waiting for a designer to respond to comments. So this refines it down to how much time these plans spend in our hands. On the new commercial building side, we issued 59 permits for new commercial buildings, and those are a little more challenging to review. There's more codes and more complexity to those. So those spend, on average, they spent 22 days in our hands under review.
Cody, do you have any idea how the Des Moines numbers compare with our suburban neighbors?
I don't have hard numbers on those. Those aren't something that are widely published, but I could reach out to some of our fellow building officials around the community and see what those timeframes are. A lot of what our neighbors do is on the residential side, so we could easily pull those, we'd easily get some feedback on those numbers, and I'll have to get back to you on that, Carl.
It'd be interesting if you could share that information. Thank you.
That construction is new construction. Where here, we certainly have new construction, but we have an enormous amount of remodeling and additions, and those can be complicated.
Yeah.
Buildings that aren't sprinkled, and it just requires a lot more time to dig into the issue.
Yeah, we have by far the largest inventory of older stock, both commercial and residential buildings. That's one of the things that intrigued me when I came to Des Moines 19 years ago, that there are things in Des Moines that you'll see that you won't see anywhere else in the state. And though it can be challenging, it's also very rewarding, and I think that's what a lot of our team finds out, too, is that when they come to work for Des Moines, they're here to stay, because it is very unique, very interesting, and certainly very rewarding, very rewarding place to work. The charts that I have at the bottom of the screen just show the past few fiscal year's numbers. They're broken out into a combination chart, so the number on the right-hand side shows the number of permits that are issued, reflected by the line, and then the orange columns reflect the average number of working days that those projects spend in our hands for issuing those permits. You will see that the numbers are fairly consistent. Our new house permit numbers have gone down a little bit from the previous year, while our review timeframe has not gone down as much. We have had a reduction in staff over the course of the past year through some attrition and through our budget challenges. We've been functioning economically and trying to be fiscally responsible while still maintaining a reasonable turnaround timeframe. So I'm kind of working my way up into the accomplishments here, or working into more accomplishments, and one of those is the number of dwelling units that we permitted over the past fiscal year. We've had some good projects on all sides of town, and you'll see that reflected here on this slide. In fiscal year 25, we issued permits for 1,660 new residential dwelling units. And of those, 224 had affordability requirements associated with them through the city incentive programs that were administered. We have another 342 residential dwelling units currently under review, so we anticipate issuing permits for those in the upcoming year. And as of about a week ago, when I pulled these numbers, we had 1,845 new dwelling units currently under construction. So many of those are the permits that we issued last year. Some of them are permits from the prior year. We're pumping out a lot of new residential units. 1,845 that are under construction. It is, it is.
Single-family homes, that includes like apartments and...
Yep, that includes everything. It does, it does. What you see on this slide is a range of projects. So in the top left is Forest Avenue Row Homes. Northwest part of town, that's a nice missing-middle housing product that we haven't seen a lot of up until recently. In the upper right are a couple of new homes going up in Woodmont Platteau, up in the northeast part of town. There's been a lot of new homes built up in that area. The lower left is the most recent Link Project down on Gray Station. And then the lower right is the Park Indy, another missing-middle project. So this slide represents the range of new dwelling units that we're seeing, both single-family, mid-size, missing, what we call missing-middle housing, as well as the high-density residential.
So Cody, do you have a before and after of the Park Indy project?
I do not have the before picture here, but that has been quite the transformation of that site.
Well, you're being kind. So that was a mobile home park? That was what would be a good word to... What?
It was in pretty poor condition.
Pretty poor condition.
I'd say the the quality of life, based on the look of those structures, wasn't what we want to see in Des Moines. A lot of our efforts are focused on how we can improve the affordability, but also the quality of construction of where people have to live. And what you see on the slide here is an affordable product. But what I would argue is that this is a lot higher standard of life than what existed on the site previously.
So the upper left and the lower right are by the same builder?
They are, they are.
And Cody, I have a question. For ADUs, I know, do you know how many permits we've issued for ADUs? And are we seeing an increase since the legislature changed the law?
We...
Says anybody can build an ADU, or just about anybody.
So the accessory dwelling units, the smaller dwelling unit that would go in the backyard or on the backside of a structure, we've issued a total of about 10 permits for accessible accessory dwelling units.
Since we started allowing them?
Since we started allowing them. I haven't pulled the numbers here to just look at what we've had recently, but what I will say is that we don't see a great deal of those being permitted. The feedback that we've received has been that to construct an ADU, they're pretty pricey. So whether you're building a small house in the backyard or a large house in the backyard, a lot of the basic infrastructure that needs to be extended still makes it a pretty high entry point.
But do we include additional dwelling units that people could put in their basements?
Yep.
Or does that, that 10 includes that?
It does, yeah. Yeah, we've issued, I'd say, a few permits for the accessory units that are within the main, the primary structure. Maybe as time goes by, we'll see that more in new construction. I think that's the time when it makes the most economical sense. But to go in and do a retrofit, it's pretty costly.
It's too early, but I have similar questions to Linda. Appreciate bringing it up. Like, have we seen a couple of models that are working well that maybe the property owner or the developer would allow us to kind of use as, you know, best-in-class examples to get people thinking about it? I mean, I know there's a chance that many of these are going to be controversial, so I'd like to put out affordable, good ideas for people to have in the back of their mind.
Certainly. I know Invest DSM has built one or two, and they've been pretty open, that they're willing to share their plans for their projects. So I think that's one example. We'll certainly engage with other builders as we see them coming forward to see if it's something that could be scaled up.
Is there anything that we could do to help modify? I think right now, if it's a, if I'm doing an accessory dwelling, a separate housing unit, like in a basement, it has to have its own entrance and exit?
So there's...
I think that's, I've heard that that's somewhat of a challenge.
There's a number of ways that that can be designed. Whenever you're talking about combining units, so when you have two units that are under the same roof, there are code requirements to make sure that they have fire separation and they have independent HVAC systems. When you have more units under one roof, you're increasing the risk. So there are ways that you can share an entrance. But that entrance then needs to have, have adequate separation from both units. So if there's a fire that starts in one, it doesn't easily transfer into the exit corridor that would lead the neighbors out of that building.
Brings up the issue of infrastructure. I've often thought, because we have quite a few neighborhoods with alleys that are not utilized. And one of the, one of the things that could be done is people could put accessory dwelling units in their rear yard. For example, with a detached garage for themselves and also have a unit up above the garage or contiguous to the garage, but we don't have sanitary sewer. And I've thought, I wonder if, I don't know what this would cost, but to run a sanitary sewer down the alley to allow those homes, which typically have good-sized backyards, to build accessory dwelling units. Just that sanitary sewer alone is an impediment. How, how do you get to a sanitary sewer affordably?
Yeah, that, the, the sewer service is one of the more costly items to extend to many of these accessory dwelling units. One, one of the, and Mike's gonna talk a little bit about this later on, but one of the, one of the outcomes from the housing strategy is to evaluate our construction codes and identify some of the, some of those code requirements that are barriers or, or somewhat impediments to the construction of new dwelling units. So all, all of this is along the lines of that, that effort that will be coming up here in the, in the upcoming year. But is, Mike, to answer your question as far as the cost, I, I'm not sure what it would cost. I, I think running sewer mains down alleyways would be, would be a substantial capital investment. There may be other means of extending sewer services to those rear yards. But those would be more on a case-by-case basis. But this is, this all goes into the planning initiatives that, that our department takes on, identifying solutions to some of these challenges that we'd like to resolve.
One of those solutions might include if we redevelop or help property owners to redevelop an entire block, that can be an incentive. And potentially even carve off lots in the back. If they had a serviceable alley.
Yep, certainly. Yeah. I, I love, I love hearing the ideas coming from, coming from council. So I, I said we'd talk a little bit more about the, the permit values. To me, this is a substantial one. So we, we issued one billion forty-four million dollars worth of building permits in fiscal year twenty-five. That's, that's billion with a B. I emphasize that because this is by far the, the highest dollar value of projects that we've ever permitted in Des Moines. Now, this does include public and private investments. And what you're looking at here on this slide is a comparison of the previous fiscal years, going back to fiscal year nineteen. The blue columns on the left-hand side reflect the actual value that was documented each year. And then the orange columns to the right reflect what that value would be factoring in the cost of construction inflation since two thousand and nineteen. So even factoring in the, the construction inflation, we still, Des Moines still knocked it out of the park this year with the amount of construction that was permitted. And you consider the interest rates and the, the instability at the federal level. This, this, this says, this is very, this is important. This, this really reflects how well the city of Des Moines is doing. This tells me that we're doing things right, that people have confidence in Des Moines when they're considering where they're going to invest in real estate or business.
And to Carl's earlier question about the suburbs, if one were to remove the data centers from the permit values in the suburbs, I wonder how we would compare. This billion dollars is jobs, people living in apartments, condos. These are real people in this billion dollars. Is, is, is the million dollars a record from even the mid-teens?
It is, yep. Our next, I didn't go far enough back, but I think it was fiscal year sixteen. We, we issued over seven-hundred-million dollars worth of permits. Now, I didn't factor in the inflation from, from that time. But yeah, this is, this is our highest ever permitted value of construction projects in Des Moines.
That, that's a great number. I, you mentioned that public and private are both included here. I, I know we have some large public. Do you know what years some of those are in? Like, for example, I know the airport's been ongoing. How much of the permitted value is in the earlier years versus the latter years, if you know?
So there's, I can't speak to the previous years, but what I can say is with each fiscal year, these numbers reflect both public and private investment. So whether it's the airport or whether it's improvements to pump stations or the WRA's facility, those are all included here. I believe the value for the airport in fiscal year twenty-five was around three hundred million. So it's, it's sizable. But when I think about that project, I look at how the financing for that project went to a public vote. And the public came out and said, yes, we want, we want this investment made. And that tells me that even through the, the sizable public dollars that are being invested in the community, that again reflects that competence in this area and what the city of Des Moines is doing. So one more slide for me and then I'll hand it over here, but I wanna cover what's, what to expect coming out of the Permit Development Center in fiscal year twenty-six. We will be bringing forward a, an update to our tax abatement plan. We haven't pinned down an exact date yet for the, the council workshop presentation, but it's going to be coming up yet this fall. We continue to focus on, on sustainability efforts. And the team has a, has a, a new permit that's going through some stress testing right now before it's launched. So it'd be a one-stop, a one-application for solar photovoltaic permits. That should be launched here in the next month or two. The team is also working with the, the rest of the metro area to go through a building code update. The state of Iowa is also working through an update to their building code, building and fire codes. But what, what we'll be doing is we'll be working through an adoption process that will have the two thousand and twenty-four building codes go into effect in January. Now, I also talked about the, the review of, of construction codes for, for barriers to new housing. That will be a separate effort that will be done, done independently of this general code update. But what we've found is that working with the region, we've got a lot of the communities, in fact, everybody as of January will be on the two thousand and twenty-four construction codes. So that's, that's important because in the past, we've had each suburb and the city of Des Moines on a different, a different year of those standards, which just makes things less consistent from city to city. So we've really put a lot, a lot of effort into aligning the city of Des Moines and the metro area together so we can move forward in one, about the same time to make things easier for those that are, that are building here. Easier, more predictable. Last year, we, we did a fee, a permit fee update, and that was the first of what's anticipated to be an annual permit fee update. So again, to keep up with costs of inflation and the cost of doing business, we'll be bringing forward recommendations for, for updates to our construction permit fees. We plan on doing that every year to avoid going for five or six years and then having to do a big increase. We would rather just thing, have things increased incrementally along with the cost of doing business. And that will be coming here yet this fall for a January implementation. And the last line on this slide is just continuous problem solving. I can't emphasize enough how really the entire department works with the development community, works with the business owners. Construction is tough. Development is challenging. There's always unknowns. Especially in, in our infill areas, we're always digging up foundations of things that no one knew existed. So our team is often on the front lines out there, working with those project managers, identifying what the most viable solution is. And we'll keep that up throughout the next year. With that, I'll hand things over to Jason Van Essen.
Morning, Mayor, members of council. Jason Van Essen, planning urban design administrator. I talked a little bit about our division. We are a team of, a division of sixteen. Right now, our team is fourteen. We've had a couple of vacancies. Large part of our charge is development review. It's board and commission support, as well as long-range planning, as Cody alluded to in this opening. You can see a couple of graphics up here on the screen. One on the right is one of our many P and Z meetings, voting on the consent agenda, which is my favorite part of the meeting. And then on your left is a graphic from our chapter one thirty-five, site plan and design ordinance. Big part of what we're doing is site plan review, building permit review, reviewing it against the codes. And on the top, it, it doesn't really shine through quite as well, but that's a link off the website to our electronic online format of our zoning code and development code, which is, we launched a year and a half or so ago. Been very successful, very easy to use. Really appreciate that we've been able to move to that. A big part of what we do as far as importance and visioning is that meeting with the public. It's developing the long-range visions for the city, whether that's the comprehensive plan, whether it's, this is actually a photograph from one of our meetings when we were developing the city's historic preservation plan a year or so ago. That was a great effort. Had a variety of individuals from across the community, different interests involved. Former mayor, county and Mayor Bozen both involved. And I'm really proud of this effort. I've in particular won an award and a little, little picture to show you here in a minute. But as Cody mentioned, you know, a big part of what we do is really working with the public. So if that's planning, that's, you know, getting out there, facilitating feedback on the development review side, that's problem solving. That's helping people get their projects through our processes. We want them to be successful. This slide does a really good job of taking what we do a little deeper, help you understand what our day-to-day is like. So we had a little over twenty-five-hundred submittals in fiscal year twenty-five. This is that development review activity. So that's site plans, that's plating, activity. That's reviewing commercial building permits, new homes, large-scale development plans, and all the little stuff in between. We actually completed more reviews in that fiscal year than we did had applications, just because there's always a backlog from previous fiscal year. So pushing three thousand different things that we're looking at, our staff is reviewing in a twelve-month period. We organize and moderate the pre-application meeting process. So we're the point for that, although it involves departments and organizations outside the city. It's a one-stop opportunity for somebody that's interested in a project to come in and sit down with planning staff, building code, fire, waterworks, engineering, traffic, sometimes parks department. It just depends on what the project is. But we bring that all together, provide them feedback to, and steps on how to move their project forward. So you can see we had three hundred and fifty-four of those requests in fiscal year twenty-five. A, a big part of what you see coming out of our division, that's stuff that's on your agenda circulated through our boards and commissions. So that's the Planning and Zoning Commission, Zoning Board of Adjustment, and Historic Preservation Commission. Those are our three that we staff. The term certificate appropriateness is really just a decision and order for that Historic Preservation Commission. There's also a list of things that staff can review administratively. So in this fiscal year, we reviewed or issued ninety-two different approvals for three local historic districts and then the local landmarks that we have in Des Moines. So the local historic districts are in Riverbend, Sherman Hill, and then the Owlshead neighborhood. Zoning Board of Adjustment, seventy-one different cases. So they're looking at use variances, they're looking at conditional use permits, relief or signings regulations. So we had seventy-one of those cases. They meet once a month, just like the Historic Preservation Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission. A little wider variety of things that they're looking at. They, we had a hundred and ten cases in front of them. It ranges from things like the, you know, amending our comprehensive plan. Sometimes that's a map amendment. You know, that's probably associated with a rezoning where maybe we're changing the future land use map designation. You see those come forward with the rezonings on your agenda. Alluded to the zoning map amendments, so those rezoning cases, sometimes controversial, often not. And that's why we have a consent agenda that we try to use to help speed the process along. The commission also has a role in, in reviewing new urban renewal plans, and that's set by state code. So they make a recommendation to you as to whether or not that, that urban renewal plan is in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. They are the outlet for design alternatives for site plan reviews. That's coming out of chapter one thirty-five. So that might be relief to, you know, bulk-type standards setbacks, building heights could be design-related, more like about materiality. But they, they review those as staff. There's, you've often probably heard us talk about the type-one design alternative, which is the administrative side of the equation. And the one thing I do wanna point out is on our site plans and residential permits, we're reviewing those administratively, you know, at least seventy-five percent of those are handled by staff. It's a, a smaller number that's making it onto the commission, an even smaller number that gets appealed to you. So there's just a lot of work that gets done in the background that I wanna mention. The, anytime we go to vacate right-of-way, that, that first stop in that process, if it's an established a right-of-way path that's been used is the Planning and Zoning Commission, they make a recommendation to you on whether or not they think it's needed for a public purpose. And the, the value of that is, is a, that is is the point in time where we send notice to the neighbors. Excuse me. And so it really is kind of a double check, make sure that everybody's on the same page or at least aware of, of a proposal to vacate an alley or different things. And then they also review preliminary plats. So they're looking at kind of the larger plating plan for a subdivision. And they approve that. And then the commission on the back end, you approve the final plat. So as the developers come in and doing small sub-areas, you see those final plats. And so, and then there's, we have even, you know, kind of a lesser platter survey process. It's all administrative. Those are, you know, the really great statistics to give you a sense of the volume of work we do in that development review, board and commission support. That's a, a big chunk of what our division is doing. We, we kinda interface with the other two divisions in a unique way. Part of what we do is a little bit like the Permit Development Center where it's compliance, reviews. The other part is that, that broad visioning, thinking, how do we move the city forward, long-range planning, engaging the public. I think the, there's, you really, you have to do both of those, and there's a strong overlap between the two. But the key skills as far as like communicating with individuals, coordinating, engaging the public, engaging the development community is all, all the same. The graphic on, on the right there shows just site plans over the last three fiscal years with the blue bar being the number. In fiscal year twenty-five, we kinda had, excuse me, a hundred and fifty-seven site plans that we reviewed. These are, you know, site plan, when we refer to a site plan, we're thinking about what we would call a commercial project. So that's, you know, commercial, industrial uses. That's also multifamily, anything that has three units or more is gonna get a site plan. And then you can see the orange bar reflects the, the time in review. That's, you know, our end of the, of the review. So fiscal year twenty-five, we were a little over twenty-five days in review on a site plan. I always wanna show, I, I don't have a recent number, but somewhere on average between two-thirds and seventy-five percent or three-quarters of the time that it takes to get a site plan approved, those are actually, that's time us, we're waiting for where we're waiting for the other side to get their submittals in. We represent about, you know, 1/3 to 25% or so of the total review time. And of course, this is just our time here, the 25 or so days.
The time that I can ask this, and I would really like to see a policy change, and I've asked for this before, is that when neighborhood, when a developer is required to do a neighborhood meeting, I mean, you're already notifying the neighborhood associations. Why can't we notify the ward council person? So many times we get past that, and I, and I see, you know, they come before council and say, "Well, two people showed up for the neighborhood meeting." When really, if more people knew about it, it would be on their radar. And I know that they notify within 250 feet, but why not, why not notify the ward council person? We go to neighborhood meetings, we can talk about it, we can say this is what's coming. I just don't understand why we can't do that.
Yeah, I think that we've wanted to offer caution in your involvement in deliberations early before something that you're going to vote on later. So, I mean, we can talk about that a little bit more later on.
Well, if we just know about it, we can at least let people know, hey, here's a neighborhood meeting coming up.
Yeah.
It just seems like...
The other thing too is we don't track when they have it. They report back to us. We leave it to the applicant to schedule that, organize it. It's their meeting. So we don't always know precisely when they're going to have it.
But it's their meeting, but sometimes they really don't want people to show up because then they can say, oh, there was no, there was no opposition, or only two people showed up, which gives the impression that maybe no one cares, when people do care. And it is our neighborhoods. They live in it. They should have the right to know about it. And as far as the council person, okay, we don't have to, we can go and be silent, but at least we could, we should be able to say, hey, here's what's coming. Thank you. We need four votes.
Well, a simple solution, we require the developer, do we not, to have a neighborhood meeting?
Yeah, for rezonings. I mean, not all activities like a site plan doesn't...
Well, then require the developer to notify the ward council.
To notify the ward council person.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I've been asking.
Well, we can dig into it. I don't, I don't want to commit to that.
I've been asking for a long time, and the answer's always been no. So this seems like a good time when we have all the council here.
Obviously, to keep the, you know, to have a separation. So if it's a developer's requirement to do it, then it's on them to let us probably know. And...
They should be required. They have to notify the neighbors. They can notify the ward council person.
So we can review that policy and bring that back as two options, where maybe the developer's letting you know about the project directly. I'll talk with Jeff when he gets back in, so, three weeks.
But as a ward councilman, are we able to go to, is it the goal to go to all the meetings to...
That's up to whether, whether, I can't answer that.
No, but is that the ultimate goal? Is it, you want to be able to...
I need to be able to go to neighborhood meetings and say, hey, here's what's, here's what's happening. This guy wants to open a whatever.
The one thing that we've done in the last few months, I, it's probably been longer than I realized because time just kind of blurs together, but we've been sending, we've been working through Cody, but Cody's been sending you guys like a summary of like what we have for pre-apps, what's going on the agenda, what's on the preliminary agenda, what's, how the, the meeting went, you know. So, I mean, we are interested in trying to spread the word, get information out.
And that's very helpful. I think we've got one for, you know, what's staff recommendations for next week's meeting, and then there was an agenda, but I'm talking about the neighborhood. When a developer is required to have a neighborhood meeting, then, then our neighborhoods have the right to know what's happening in their neighborhood. And not just those few...
Well, they actually, I mean, they are giving the formal, whoever is the designated contact for the association is a part of their list, so they do have to notify the association.
I understand that, but many associations are only meeting quarterly. I mean, that, there just needs to be, I think it would just be better if we could notify the council members.
And then that is then for the council to get more people there, to help get more people there?
Well, at least we know about it.
I mean, because the goal is to get the people of the neighborhood there, right?
Yeah. And I think there is a way to walk that line carefully where we can get the guidance from legal that, that the due process is still being followed, right? And so that the influence of the council is at the end of the process. You can definitely be informed, sit in and listen on those things. But you, there's, there's going to have to be a cautionary note about how much influence council has early on in the process.
Well, a council person doesn't have to go to the meeting either. It's up to the council person. If a developer is wise, the developer would reach out to the council person anyway.
Sure.
And say, this is what we'd like to do.
And when that happens, it's always been very successful. When developers have reached out to me and have talked to me about it, and I understand it, and then I can, I can, I can let neighbors know about it, and it has been very successful. I'm not aware of any time that it has not been successful.
Yeah, so what would the council think about making their policy more along the line that developer reaches out to the ward council member early on, so then the communication starts there? It's going to be safer to have those one-on-one conversations with the process.
I think we're worried about things we shouldn't be worried about, really. And in the end, like in the end, there's 1,000 reasons for us to be a part of it. It doesn't happen a lot, but I've been a part in, in a short period of time of several neighborhood meetings where there were no staff there, nobody else, and the neighbors got maybe a false sense of the project and didn't really go through the complications of it. You know, showed some pretty pictures and, and, and it wasn't until significantly later that, that everybody was really able to hear why this was maybe more controversial than they first thought. It, like, it's, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but I think the, I think the requirement for the neighborhood meeting is a policy of the council. It's, the neighborhood meeting is not, is not designed or created for a function of the planning process.
It is a code requirement.
That council set.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the, in the, in the past, we administered it more as a policy, but when we adopted the new code, it's actually, it's in the code now.
Yeah.
You're right. Council approved.
Right, that's correct.
So that, so, and I'm just trying to make this point, that the council approved that because we want the neighborhood meeting to serve as a tool for the entire process, which ultimately is decided by the council, not just a tool of the planning process. You know, that, that's isolated from us. And, and by the way, in an environment where we're going to have to cut lots and lots of, of, of time and energy from our processes because of what the state's doing to us and, and decisions we're making about resources, it will be nice that we have, that we waste less time where neighbors, developers, planning staff, and council are on different lanes. I mean, the more we can be in unison on projects earlier on, the less wasted time we have, and the more likely we're going to be able to maximize the resources that we have.
I agree. I just think it needs to be implemented.
Some different accomplishments for the last fiscal year. The big one there is we won an award for the, as the National Commission of the Year. And this really, this was for the, our work on the Reflect DSM, the city's wide historic preservation plan. And really, the, the reason why we won was the unique and outreach effort that we made to engage youth, to engage the public in that process, really try to grow who all is involved with the idea of historic preservation. We made updates to Chapter 134 and 135, and we continue to do that. That is an ever-ongoing process. Looking at amendments generally on a quarterly basis, just from a timing perspective. A couple of things do stand out as far as like streamlined processes. In this last fiscal year, for the Historic Commission, we substantially increased the list of things that are eligible for administrative review. And that's been a real godsend, both for the staff, for the commission, and for property owners in those three local historic districts. It's really, you know, our summer agendas for the HBC used to be, it wouldn't be uncommon to have like 18 or so items, and we're substantially less than that in the single digits this year for this, this summer because we've been able to handle so many things administratively now. Also combined, or kind of eliminated a separate landmark review board. So now we just have the Historic Preservation Commission, which has made our processes easier because those landmark items are just handled on a normal agenda. We don't have to have a special meeting. It doesn't come onto the, to the commission's agenda later and take a couple of months worth of time for a small project that really should be looked at in a month or less. Same with Chapter 135. You might recall that we held meetings with developers and designers a year, year and a half so ago. Out of that, we heard kind of a consistent theme that there was an interest in increasing what staff could consider through the Type 1 design alternative process, as they'd seen how we had implemented the code, how, and were able to work with folks in a consistent manner that still ends up in a good result. There was interest from, from the development design community, but also interest on our end and from, from the council to streamline that process, and that's been very, very beneficial. We continue to coordinate with partners, whether that's on the development review side, as I alluded to, in like the pre-application meetings or routing site plans. I mean, one thing that gets lost is a lot of that, the site plan and plating review. There's a lot of people involved in that, but we are the point person. We are the face of the city to that applicant. So we are, all of the comments from all the other departments and outside entities are coming to us, and then it's getting fed to the, to the developer, to their designer. And that, we, you know, take pride and have that responsibility, but it is a responsibility. And to coordinate that many people, our process, you know, our, our staff do a great job. And certainly, when there's challenges arise, have a challenging task. We also work closely with external partners on more of the planning, long-range thinking type side of things, whether that's Invest DSM, NDC, NFC, different organizations, partnering with our, you know, SMID boards, our streetscape areas, whether that's, you know, looking at an annual budget, whether that's administering like the facade program on Southwest 9th Street. Our, our staff administers that program. So there's a big variety of things that we touch as far as like coordination with outside parties. And then we were awarded in the fiscal year a certified local government grant from the state. So this is historic preservation, certified local government in historic preservation. To do, one of the big ticket items out of Reflect DSM was, is to do a citywide survey, historic survey, and public engagement strategy. And we were, we were awarded a grant to develop, hire somebody to help us do a work program. There's a lot of great examples across the country using technology and getting the community involved with identifying historic resources, but we need help in taking those different examples and rightsizing it to Des Moines and to our, our character and realities. And so we will be moving forward with that. There was a pause on that grant. The state wasn't, I'm not sure if they were going to get that, so we're a little behind the schedule. But that recently, we were recently notified that it has moved forward and that we can proceed. So we will be moving into implementation, and so that's part of what you can expect to see in this fiscal year. We, this fiscal year, we'll also be working on the comprehensive plan, Plan DSM, identifying, you know, it's a great document, very relevant. There are a few things that we've kind of learned over time that we want to make some adjustments, like, for example, like how we describe density in the plan. I think we have better ways to describe it that will help us in our rezoning processes. That we will, we are and continue to, looking at the codes and making changes to those, making improvements. We'll continue to work with our partners, whether that's a facade program, whether that's, you know, helping Invest DSM replat some lots to build new homes on. And then, of course, continue on with the development review and board and commission support.
Jason, can you give us an idea, a little snapshot of some code improvements that you're looking at?
Right now, we, on the next, not this week's P&amp;Z agenda, but next, the following agenda, we will have, we'll be making amendments for ADUs, because of the state legislation, the variance test legislation. There's also a sign provision change that's being processed. And then, I'm missing, oh, and then the liquor and tobacco, you know, when we did the workshop not too long ago. So we've got some amendments that are going to address how we describe liquor and tobacco stores and then change the, the regulations a little bit with regard to tobacco. Just all the stuff that we talked about in the last workshop. So then that should get in front of you, and I don't remember your meeting schedule, but in October, we'll be implementing it.
Thanks.
You bet. Well, unless there's any more questions for me, I'll pass it on to Carrie, talk about Economic Development Office.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Carrie Cruz with the Economic Development Division. I'm going to briefly and quickly, in the interest of time, give a quick overview of our team's core functions, go highlight a few successes from last fiscal year, and preview our strategic priorities that our team will be focused on here in the current fiscal year and beyond. So our core function in our office is really to foster economic growth here in the city of Des Moines. We focus a lot on jobs and housing. We also focus a lot on place-making, ensuring that our community is an attractive place for investment. We do our work through, primarily through incentive tools, incentivizing real estate development and redevelopment of the city. We also have some jobs focused incentives that we work on. Annually, our team has a business retention and expansion program that we work on as well. So we're out meeting with local businesses, business leaders, making sure they know who we are, what our office does, that we're building those relationships with our local business community. So as they grow, as their needs evolve, and they look for potentially relocations or new space, we want to be their first call, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to retain and foster business growth in the city as much as we possibly can. Couple other initiatives that our team works on, we publish two newsletters monthly. So we lead the efforts to publish the Development Services Newsletter, as well as the Small Business Minute Newsletter, which is focused on tools and resources and highlighting small business development in the city. Our team represents the city at a lot of our community events, business events, real estate, economic development events, making sure we have a presence at those. And we often are asked to speak and present at those events as well. We had 131 speaking engagements that our team had worked on last fiscal year. So a significant amount of time that we spend trying to really be out there and make sure the community knows the work that we're doing and who we are. We also provide a lot of support to our local chambers and the Greater Des Moines Partnership. We serve on a lot of their boards, their committees, attend a lot of their different initiatives that they're working on and support those as well. Over the past year and a half, we've had a really strong effort to build out our Small Business Support Center with the addition of our two project managers. And so we've had a really strong focus on building out what that is, the offerings that we have for our small businesses, and continue to expand on that work. We also do a lot of behind-the-scenes work, administrative work, so the city's urban renewal plans. We have 28 urban renewal plans across the city. We have 28 urban renewal plans across the city that our team manages, all the administrative paperwork and updating and amending of those. We have one that's underway right now in the Riverview area that we're working to bring forward, to have an additional incentive area to attract investment there. We also do a lot of administrative work on our active development agreements, so just because a project completes construction, our work doesn't stop there. We often have 15 to 20 years of compliance, monitoring, administering the incentive payments to those projects over time. So we have 141 active development agreements that we work on annually as well. We also have a couple of small incentive financial assistance programs that our team administers, so the relaunch of our microloan program, the Impact Loan, small business loans. We also administer the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program. A couple other things I'll touch on that we spend quite a bit of time on, we do all the administrative work for the Iowa Reinvestment Act districts in close collaboration with the Iowa Economic Development Authority and the Iowa Department of Revenue. We have three of those areas in the city. The first was the Iowa Events Center Hotel. The second is the Capital City District, which is the soccer stadium in Western Gateway area, and the third is in collaboration through a 28E agreement with the City of Urbendale for the Merle Hay Mall area. So those have frequent reporting needs and administrative work that we assist with that. The last thing, not necessarily one of our core functions, but a recent change at the city, our team is also providing staffing, support, and resources to assist the city manager's office with what was formerly the Food Security Task Force. I think it's being renamed the Food Systems Advisory Committee in an effort to carry forward various sustainability goals of the city council.
You talked about support to the chambers, and I know for many years I've attended the East Des Moines Chamber, then it became Fuse, and your department was always good about coming and giving an update, but now that that chamber has dissolved, I feel like we're kind of in a void. And, and I know that there's talk that, you know, it can be merged with others, but what was so wonderful is that we had our own chamber that we could talk about what was going on in, in our community, and now that's gone, and I'm just wondering how we can replace that.
Yeah, so we've been in some of those conversations, we understand, there's been a lot of discussions between what was Fuse and the Downtown Chamber, the Downtown Chamber's rebranding to the Des Moines Chamber. You know, ultimately, you know, there's always the ability for a specific, if an eastside chamber wanted to be developed and created, those opportunities exist, and our team will be there to support those efforts and continue to do what we can. I will say, in my experience of working in this field, chambers kind of rise and decline based on their leadership and their executive director, but our role is really just, we're there to support and come present and make sure that we're, we're part of what they're doing. So if, in the event that does come back, we will certainly be there to support that organization. Okay, I'm going to pretty briefly skip through a lot of these successes from last year, since none of these projects are new to this council. You've all voted on development agreements to support these projects, but we had a really high number of multifamily and mixed-use projects last fiscal year that wrapped up completion of construction or nearing completion of construction. We have projects all throughout the city, downtown, as well as in the neighborhoods. These ones highlight the Star Lofts on Ingersoll, Park Indy, which we've talked about, the Klein Department Store up in Highland Park, Heppa Senior Housing at South Ridge, and the Woda Cooper Project at Alley Landing, the former Plaza Lanes site. A couple other projects that are getting under construction now, we have the Union at River's Edge that's getting closer to completion. We broke ground on the High Rise Tower that Cody talked about earlier in the presentation. What a fantastic thing for our community to have a high-rise, multi-residential project under construction, especially in the current economic climate. A lot of communities our size can't stay the same, so really proud that we were able to assist with that project. Heart of America broke ground on their second project up in the East Village, following the Tempo, and you can see in the lower photos of the three that are stacked, that's the Aston Apartments, starting to go vertical on East 6th. High Street Lofts, that's the Ryan Wade Project up at 17th and High Street, they're starting their second phase of that project. And then we were really excited to get to attend the groundbreaking for the Falcon Apartments at 1435 Mulberry here in the last few weeks, a project that has kind of paused and come back to life multiple times. The general contractor for that project ultimately ended up taking on the project, and they're going to be the developer and the contractor, so really excited to see that one progressing. Couple other projects that are getting ready to get started, the Highland Park Flats, Jake Sparks is working on that project, the Goldfinch Lofts Project on Ingersoll, that'll be the Cutler's second mixed-use project on the Ingersoll Corridor, and the North Des Moines Town Hall Project, a historic renovation of the two-story structure, it's going to include a coffee shop and five units, as well as new construction of a three-story structure that'll have kitchen spaces, community spaces, as well as housing on the upper floors. We also were really excited to have a couple of proposals for office-to-housing conversion projects, the Financial Center, the lower portion of that building, that project is now under construction and underway. The Two Ruance Center Project, they will be reapplying for historic tax credits this fall, so that is a source that is needed for that project to proceed. With all of those projects, so I've highlighted on the slides 20 projects that our team assisted in obtaining development agreements and incentives for. A couple of things that I want to note that I think are particularly impressive, of those 20 incentivized projects, that's 2,200 housing units that are included in all of those. Now, this is a different timeframe than the permitted units going under construction, as we're looking at multiple phases of projects throughout the construction cycle. Of the 2,200 units that we have in development agreements, 667 of those have affordability provisions, so roughly 30% of the units that we've incentivized will also have affordability restrictions on them. The other thing I want to mention is, on those 20 projects, we have 17 unique developers, development groups that we're working with. So it's not a situation where we have one or two developers that are, you know, putting all their eggs in the Des Moines basket, we have a really great mix of developers investing in our community. And of those 17, seven of those are from out of state. So we have developers from Minnesota, Nebraska, South Dakota, Missouri, Indiana, and Ohio in that mix. So really great recognition of the strength of our market and being able to kind of broaden our horizons outside our state lines and attract that development into the city of Des Moines. Next, I just want to touch on our business retention and expansion efforts. This is a sampling of companies that we worked with in the last fiscal year on those retention and expansion efforts, as well as attraction. A couple of these don't have any direct financial assistance that our team necessarily worked on, but because of other indirect projects, we're able to retain those companies. So RSM, for example, they were ready for a change, they were looking for a new location. Once they had confirmation that we were working with the Riverview Office Building on a parking solution for that office building, that was really what secured the deal to keep them downtown and help them find a location where they felt they could grow for the next decade, or hopefully longer than a decade. Kemen is another company with a wonderful global presence here in the city of Des Moines. Their global headquarters is in the Southeast Ag Industrial Park area. They are wrapping up completion of construction of a new warehouse, it's over 300,000 square feet at 2,200 Mari. This is a project that will enable the company to consolidate eight other warehousing locations throughout the region into this one location adjacent to their global headquarters, and so an opportunity to partner with them again and continue helping them operate efficiently and cost-effectively and grow their presence here in Des Moines. Yes?
Are the other eight locations in the city, or some of them?
Some of them are outside the city as well. There is a mix.
Yeah. And are they looking to dispose of those, or?
The ones that are in the city of Des Moines, I know that they were looking, they were listing those for sale, we've had a couple of people inquire about those properties. I think they had a few in Urbendale as well.
Can you let us know what those addresses are? They're probably nondescript.
Yeah, be happy to follow up with that. A couple other just commercial successes, I mentioned the Riverview Office Building, it's going through a full renovation. Elevator co-warehousing and community, this is a really kind of unique mix of offerings that this company has. They give flexible, flexible month-to-month options for small to medium-sized businesses to lease office and kind of micro warehousing space, as well as give classes, and really are building a community at this location. When they reached out to our team, they weren't looking for financial assistance, they really were going based on their experience from launching a similar product in Omaha, Nebraska, where they had a lot of success. They wanted to first kind of get our team's reaction to this concept, if we felt there was a need for something like this in downtown Des Moines, and help navigating who they should contact to ask specific zoning questions and what our process looks like. So that was really our team's role in that, was kind of being the welcoming committee to them and being encouraging of their project, and then connecting them to the right resources to help them get this completed. So it's not always that we're, we're in conversations because people are looking for financial assistance, is the point I'd like to get across there. Another project that we're particularly proud of is the Carpenter Paper Warehouse renovation. This was a former warehouse that was owned by EMC that was really just being used for storage, not adding a lot on the tax base. Tim Ritma purchased that building, did a full historic renovation, and he had that all-for-commercial office space, he had the whole building leased up before he was even done with that construction. So again, we hear a lot about the increasing vacancy of office space in downtown, and sometimes it feels like people are raising alarm bells, but we can see from these projects, if we have, if we reinvest in our building stock, if we bring them up to Class A, they're modernized, amenitized, we're able to attract and fill office space in downtown Des Moines. And this is a great example of that.
It should make some more sense than building new.
Yes. And there's a lot of tools and resources out there, especially with the historic buildings that can get historic tax credits. So looking forward to the current fiscal year and beyond, our team works a lot on several large master plan areas where we have long-term development agreements. A lot of these projects, we go into them from the very beginning knowing it's probably going to be multi-decade effort between the visioning, the planning, assembling, getting sites ready, and then actually implementing the development on these sites. So a couple of areas that we'll continue to spend a lot of time and focus on is the market district, working alongside the city manager's office on the soccer stadium proposals and the development that that will spur around it, the Gray's Station with Hubble and Gray's Landing with Sherman adjacent to that stadium district, and then our two malls are properties that we've been partners and involved in for many years, and continue to look for ways to attract investment and reinvestment into those assets for the community. We've also been doing some proactive work on trying to identify and line up property for opportunities to attract advanced manufacturing and light industrial-type developments. Last fiscal year, we were able to acquire a missing piece, on the photo on the left in the purple highlight is city-owned property, we had a missing piece in the middle there we were able to acquire to assemble and finally get some good contiguous acres that will front the southeast connector, once that project is done being connected, and I think that will be a really attractive site for us to market once that infrastructure's in place. We also laid the groundwork for getting an urban renewal plan in place for the southeast industrial area that Cody mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, that has now received site certification. In the short time that the site has been certified, we've been very fortunate that we did have a large prospect we were able to actually compete for. Unfortunately, we did get word that that prospect has selected another site, but I think the positive thing here is, prior to collaborating with Ryan Companies and having willing property owners that are, that are willing to sell property under contract, incentive tools in place, we wouldn't have even been able to pitch a site for a large prospect like that, because we just didn't have any sites that were available. So the fact we're able to compete for those now is really exciting, and I think the inquiries we're getting so quickly after just having the site certified is promising for development that we will eventually see.
Carrie, can you talk for just a second on any learnings you had after that?
We have scheduled.
Pitch that we made for the, I mean, that was very promising, and.
Yes.
I actually thought there was a period of time where it was a done deal. What, what, what did we learn?
Yeah.
Why they went somewhere else?
Appreciate your comment. So we have scheduled a follow-up with their brokerage team that helped the company evaluate sites all across the nation. We haven't had that sit down yet, but they have agreed to sit down with us and share with us, you know, what made the other site they ended up selecting more competitive, what could we potentially have done, you know, what were our strengths to this site, what did they view as weaknesses, so we can learn from that and, and see if there's adjustments that we need to make in our, in our marketing, and how, how we prepare the site to be more competitive in the future. So we will follow up once we have a chance to have that debrief. All right, a couple other strategic priorities, so our team is facilitating the request for interest on City Hall and the request for proposals on the Armory Building. The request for proposals for the Armory went out fairly recently, we've had a few inquiries and a few building tours already on that one, and those will be due back at the end of October. And the request for interest process on City Hall, we don't have a defined timeline, we continue to have positive discussions on that, on this property, and we're still kind of in the early discovery stages of trying to put together a proposal for, for City Hall, but that is a big priority for our team to work on this fiscal year, as the city's move out of these assets is coming up here in the next calendar year.
The Armory Building, we would sell, but City Hall, we would lease.
That is, that is the plan currently, we would want to maintain ownership of City Hall, similar to where the World Food Prize is at in our old library building. We kind of, ideally, we would like to have an arrangement like that for City Hall. The Armory is a building we are planning to sell. All right, our team is also collaborating very closely with our Neighborhood Services Division, our federal funds team, on the hopeful acquisition of the historic building at 200 Euclid. We helped facilitate an open house and a request for proposals process, and council voted for a preferred developer for us to work on, so we're in frequent communications with that developer and hoping to bring back preliminary terms of a development agreement for this property here in the coming months. Polk County, this was an interesting one, so Polk County, in recent years, finished assembling a couple of lots that they didn't own, adjacent to their surface parking lot that's next to the historic county courthouse, so they now own a contiguous city block there. They reached out to our team as they recognized the experience our team had in facilitating RFP processes and getting proposals for sites, and so we helped them draft an RFP. We had four respondents to that proposal, or requests for proposals, and most recently, our steps on this one, we, since the city doesn't own the site, we wanted to make sure the county was going to transact the site to a developer, when and if we select a preferred developer and enter into a development agreement. So most recently, we entered into a 28E with the county to kind of identify responsibilities of the city, responsibilities of the county, and we're now at a point where we have all the paperwork in place for us to proceed and start meeting with the developers that made proposals for the site, and would look to this fall bringing forward a recommendation for a developer and a preliminary terms of an agreement to the council. All right, shifting into updates from our Small Business Support Center. First off, on outreach and education, as you're all aware, Nick and Breann are out in the community, frequently meeting with pretty much everyone and anyone that's involved in the small, small business ecosystem. And through all that outreach, we've gotten a lot of feedback that has really informed the, the different initiatives and priorities that we're bringing forward as part of our Small Business Support Center. I mentioned the Small Business Minute Newsletter previously. New is an event that we're calling the Quarterly Connect, which is an opportunity New is an event that we're calling the Quarterly Connect, which is an opportunity for small businesses to come together, to learn from one another, to network with one another. And are events that Nick and Breann plan and host at different businesses all throughout the city, so all different locations. The photo in the top center is from the first Quarterly Connect event that they hosted, which was well-attended, and we received really positive feedback from that event. There certainly seems to be a demand for more of these opportunities. We were asked, you know, is there a way these businesses can stay in touch and engage in between the Quarterly Connect meetings? And so we're working on creating some different platforms to be able to kind of foster that small business community. They're also working on an ecosystem exchange for small business resource partners throughout the city. Essentially, when our team went out and met with all the different groups that provide numerous services to small businesses throughout the community, we gained a deep understanding of kind of what each person, each group is doing and how to make good referrals. But what we recognized was there's not always a strong understanding between all the resource partners, who's doing what. And so if they're helping a small business that has a need that they can't necessarily provide services for, they might refer them back to Nick and Breann because they have all those connections and then they're getting referred out to the right partner. But instead of passing them around, we're trying to create a platform where all the service providers can come together, present what it is their organization does and kind of build that education amongst all the service providers to have strong referrals and make sure that we are providing the best services that we can to support our small businesses. All right, and similar to our BRE program, monthly, our, our project managers are going out and picking different areas of the city and doing small business visits as well, making sure that, you know, meeting those business owners where they are because they can't always have time to get away to attend different meetings. And so making sure they're aware of our office, what services we provide, and they have a friendly face here at City Hall that they can turn to if they run into any challenges or if they need help finding the right, you know, resource to help their business, they have a person they can contact and reach out to. Couple of internal programming initiatives that we're working on in the Small Business Support Center. So I think we've had a chance now to sit down with each of you to kind of go over our concept for a Des Moines public market, a city public market. We do have some commercial space in the Fifth and Walnut Prepping Ramp that is not being utilized at the moment. And we thought, what a, what a great opportunity to blend services that we would like to provide as part of our Small Business Support Center and use an underutilized city asset. So we're still in the very early kind of discovery, education phase. We're having meetings with a lot of community groups, making sure we're not duplicating other things that are out there, but really adding to what's being done throughout the city. And then we plan to meet with other organizations that run public markets and see what we can learn from them, what went well, what didn't go well, what do you wish you had done differently? So we'll continue that kind of education, discovery phase and come back to council once we have a recommendation for how to proceed with that. Yes, yes, we are. If we haven't met with you, we will be doing a sit-down. Our team will be reaching out to have a sit-down to talk about it more and, and show you those concepts that we are looking to model after. Lastly, I'll mention we're working to, with our communications team to build a social media presence for the Small Business Support Center. We recognize the demand that we're getting for people to be able to see what we're doing, when we're doing it, when we're hosting events where, and have a, a place to be able to go and find that information. But also, you know, a city government of our size can be an intimidating thing for a small business owner to reach out to for assistance. A lot of times, they don't even know where to start. So to have a social media presence, be able to kind of put some faces with names and really, that can be an entry point for some small businesses and how they might start first engaging with us. So we're excited. We're currently building out the content. The page isn't live yet, but we're going to build out the content for that and hope to launch that here soon. All right. Launching into our financial assistance program, so the Impact Loan, we had six business recipients that we issued small business micro loans to in the last fiscal year. Very happy to report, even though, you know, we're only a few months into the repayment cycle of those loans, but all six are in compliance and actively making their repayments on those loans. And this is a program that we would like to grow and continue. I also mentioned earlier that we administer our Neighborhood Revitalization Grant Program and just wanted to highlight a couple of projects that program has assisted over the years. This is a program that really has helped on the commercial real estate side transform some of our, our neighborhood commercial stock. So we have the Sequel Architecture Building on Woodland, the Varsity Cinema on 25th near Drake University, the Carriage House on Sixth Avenue, and then the Remax Precision Urban Office on Sixth Avenue as well. You can really see the, just the impact, the visual impact of the before and after for those commercial corridors. All right, so we, I wanted to give a snapshot of kind of how we funded those two programs in past years. This last fiscal year was the first year that we had allocated funding for small business loans, but we've had several rounds of the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Grant. When we started the NCR Grant Program, that really sparked from the assistance that our team provided during the COVID relief. We had some influx of funds that came into the city that in a, a quick but very responsible fashion needed to be deployed out to assist small businesses. And was really proud of the work our team was able to do to successfully do, do that and get those funds out into the community. And that really encouraged us and gave us the desire to do more grants and loan programs. And so that's kind of what sparked the NCR Grant Program. The first year of that, we had a $340,000 allocation from the General Fund. And the thought at the time was for this to be a grant program, we need a reoccurring funding source for it to be sustainable for a multi-year program. Round two, we did not have funding availability within the General Fund to budget for that. So we did use 300, or we allocated 350,000 of funds in our Economic Development Enterprise Fund. That is a fund that all of our economic development loans get repaid into if they're not funded through TIF. So we have older kind of small business loans that are having repayments come back into that fund. On occasion, we have city land sales where the proceeds, if they're not restricted and required to go back to a specific fund, this is the fund where we will put them so we can use them for economic development purposes. So that's generally how funds are coming into that fund. A lot of times, they are one-time, one-time dollars. So if we send them out as a grant, there's no way to replenish that fund. But we have, because we thought the program was so transformational and we saw a really great return on investment from those projects, we did feel it was worth using some one-time funding to keep the, keep that program going. Round three, we had a unique circumstance with ARPA dollars coming, the American Rescue Plan Act funding coming into the city. So we had an allocation from the council of 800,000 in ARPA funding to do that program for round three, where we allocated 200,000 per ward. And then this past fiscal year, we dropped back down. We had 300,000 that we allocated to the program through the Economic Development Enterprise Fund. Based on funding levels and current budget, we still don't have the ability to fund this with General Fund or identify a reoccurring funding source for it. So our recommendations for the current fiscal year will be to look at pivoting and rolling some of the NCR eligibility criteria into a loan structure versus a grant so that we have the opportunity to recoup some of those funds and continue to reinvest them back into the community. And we will also be making a request of council here. I think next month is our tentative timeline to come back to council to allocate some additional funding to the Small Business Micro Loan Program, the Impact Loan. So right now, our recommendation would be to allocate 300,000 to that program. We think that that is a level at which we might be able to also attract some private investment and some private dollars to potentially match the city's funds to do this small business loan work. We've heard some interest in doing that, and so that's something our team would like to go try to secure. And then NCR-type projects that aren't, that aren't located in an existing urban renewal area where we don't necessarily have funding tools to help would come to council on a case-by-case basis, based on funding availability under a favorable interest loan structure versus a grant. So those will be our recommendations. Our team is planning to reach out to each of you to sit down and go over in more detail. We've learned a lot from our first round of small business loans and want to make some adjustments to the program and expectations of the program. And we just want to make sure that we update you on all those details. Unfortunately, don't have time to get into all of that today. So we will schedule a follow-up to do a deeper dive on that. My last slide here, again, we do a lot of collaboration with our nonprofit development partners, InvestDSM, Neighborhood Development Corporation, serving on their boards and committees. And then we also always strive to make sure that the work we're doing is leaning into the planning work and the planning initiatives that are adopted by council. So the citywide housing strategy will be informing how we're incentivizing housing projects in the future and then always looking to the Downtown Future Forward Vision Plan and how projects downtown align with that plan. So with that, happy to take questions or we'll try to wrap it up here.
I have, I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
I think of Development Services as being the heartbeat, the heart of our city. And it, everything that we do is around our development. But I, and I think everybody does a great job, but I only hear good things about you and your team. I mean, every place I go and anybody who's had any contact with your, with your department only has good things to say.
Oh, thank you for sharing that.
So that's really good. Then your strategic priorities, I think we're missing a couple. Where's, where's like neighborhood finance and home inc?
Oh, yes.
Some of those others that are so important to our housing.
Yes, as a, as a city as a whole, we have very strong collaboration. And this, you know, isn't intended to cover every aspect of, of all of our partnerships. So want to caveat that. Yes, I appreciate that.
Just because they are so important to everything that we do.
Yes, strongly agree.
Great job.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? If not, Mike.
So real quick, follow-up on the housing strategy. We started that literally a year ago with a visit, a nice tour of the fairgrounds with Connie. But after a year of work, you know, this are the main, main things. The implementation strategy is the critical component. We're working with the city manager's office on that. We've identified about four primary things that we're going to focus on immediately. Obviously, finalizing that implementation plan, working on the tax abatement update, which Cody had mentioned earlier. Construction code review, that, that's related to more of the fire codes and building codes as it relates to entrance and exit requirements and fire suppression system requirements. And then identification of priority areas. There's a lot of mapping work that we need to do internally. Clearly, the biggest piece to making this housing strategy a reality is the financing piece. So the, the tax payment is, is one component of that financing strategy. But then the city manager's office and we will be working with you to discuss potential bonding for financing the remainder of the project. So earlier, you were talking about the ADUs. You may recall in the housing strategy, one of the things that Charles had said about that was that due to the lack of any kind of physical constraint on land area, the land prices just aren't supporting that development at a, at a mass level yet. So without a physical, whether it's mountains or ocean, constraining land supply or an urban growth boundary, constraining land supply, as long as land is seen as being abundant on the perimeter, it really makes it difficult for, for that to pencil out. The construction costs are high. But InvestDSM is leading that effort. Home Inc. led that effort with a detached unit a few, a couple of years ago. And then InvestDSM had that first brand-new unit built with an ADU in the basement. I just got another plan from them the other day, asking for comment and review on a, on a second new construction with an ADU already in the basement. And there have been some changes at the federal level from, as far as financing for ADUs across the country. So we'll continue to pursue those, those agreements. So in summary, I guess, just want to say we, Development Services, we help set vision for the community. We help you set vision. We help implement that vision by developing codes and regulations that help move us towards that vision, and then we help finance that vision. We are facilitators and we are problem solvers. So if you have a question, call us. If we don't have an answer, we'll know where to try and find it. And if we can't do that, we will put you in the correct, contact with appropriate people. So thank you very much for your time this morning, and we continue to look forward to working with you. Thank you.
First of all, I thank everybody in the council, thank all of you, the team, the implementation of, first of all, business was a critical role for Des Moines, I think, and all the renovation, because we do have the older stock and how we go about strategizing to make sure we keep the city moving forward. And it's a competitive market and, but I think we have the, kind of the bones of the structure, great old buildings, but opportunity for new. So exciting to see what's coming on and what came on in some pretty difficult times. So thank all of you and the team of Development Services for what you do every day, problem-solving and moving this city forward. So does anyone else have any questions or? If not, we will see everyone back here. We do not have a closed session, so it will be our regular meeting at five. So thank you again for your time.